Let me call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of City Council members, everyone is present. If you will stand, our pledge of allegiance and presentation of our colors will be done by our Missouri City Fire Department.
Please cover your card and join me in the pledge of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read, and it says that whereas Autism Awareness Month is an opportunity for families, friends, and our community to raise public awareness about autism, the families growing development disabilities in the country. Today, more than 2 million individuals in the United States are diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimated that 1 in 50 children are diagnosed with autism, up from a previous estimate of 1 in 88. Whereas there is currently no known cure for autism, however, as the understanding grows regarding autism spectrum disorders, it is known that early intervention is key in addressing the symptoms associated with autism. The stress on families affected by autism is immense. As they search for treatments, they find there are numerous. And because autism affects each person differently, what treatments work for some may not work for others. Therefore, it is also key that all treatment plans be made specific for each of those individuals. And whereas Hope for Three was organized to provide help and create hope by raising community awareness and providing educational and financial support to families with children diagnosed with autism spectrum disorders. Missouri City is proud to join in this mission and commend them for their unwavering commitment and encouragement to those in the autism community to never give up in their search to help their loved ones reach their full potential. And whereas Autism Awareness Month raises public awareness about autism and its effects and orders hope to all who deal with the hardships of this disorder by uniting not only the autism community, but all of Fort Bend County to address this urgent global health crisis. Together, we will solve this puzzle. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City do hereby proclaim the month of April 2013 to be Autism Awareness Month in the city of Missouri City, Texas. And I know that on April the 21st, there is an event in Sugar Land at Constellation Field called Strike Out Autism. It's at noon, and that's a Sunday, is it, or is it Saturday? Which is Sunday. Game time, and we're all going to be a participant of that, but you may want to say a little more about it?
I just want to say thank you to Mayor Owen and the community for recognizing and supporting our mission and our efforts. Since the brochures were handed out and passed to the council members, and as he stated, the statistics have changed from 1 in 88 to 1 in 50, school-aged children now diagnosed. So autism is an epidemic, and we need the support of the entire community to help these families and help them through this lifelong journey. We invite you out on April 21st, opening weekend with the Sugar Land Skeeters to Strike Out Autism. It's a family fun day, first annual event. We hope you'll come out and join us.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief? I know all this press is not here just for this great city council. There was another reader.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have the family of Samantha White come forward, please, along with Sonya Clausen from Greater Harris County 911. Come on up here. Christina, our telecommunications operator, if you'll come up here, please. And finally, Lieutenant Brower, if you'll bring your crew up here, please.
Well, Mayor, Council, I think we will all agree what makes a great community are those people that live in that community. And we're here tonight to recognize one of those very bright future person of our community. Let me give you a little bit of a background on this history. On January 25th of this year, at around 3:30 in the afternoon, Missouri City Fire Department was dispatched to a call in Missouri City for a quote-unquote grandmother stuck in a tree. Upon arrival, Lieutenant Brower and his crew found that the ladder had failed, and the grandmother was stuck in the tree. Now, being stuck in the tree and hanging on with both hands made it very difficult for her to call. But luckily, Samantha White, her four-year-old granddaughter, was there with her, was able to make the 911 call. Five, sorry. I'm sorry. Five. She was four at the time. She's had a birthday. Okay, so she's five now. Five-year-old Samantha White made the 911 call, and she was very calm. She was able to give a lot of great information to the dispatcher, which was relayed. To the fact is that we knew that Ms. Brown was not injured while she was in the tree. And because of her quick, calm actions, we were able to bring the incident to a close without any injury or any further incident to Mrs. Brown. So Samantha, we'd like to present with you... First thing we want to do is present you with a certificate for award of exemplary action for your actions on that day. Your great work, a little backpack and a little teddy bear for you. So Samantha, one other thing. One other thing. For such a great job on that day, how about if Lieutenant Brower and his crew take you outside and give you a quick ride in the fire truck? Would you like that? All right. So, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to let Sonya Clausen from Greater Harris County 911 make a presentation also.
Meant I have one more little thing for you. My name is Sonya Clausen, and I'm with Greater Harris County 911. And I wanted to let you know that today is the first day of National 911 Education Month for the entire month of April. And I couldn't think of a better way to promote National Education Month than to recognize you as someone who does know how to call 911 and what to do. So we have a special little medal. We're going to give you everyday hero, 911. You can have another medal with some more goodies about 911 for you, because you can share with your family and your friends. Thank you so much for doing such a great job. Here you go.
Good job, Samantha.
We need to hear Grandma's story.
Yeah. Why was she in the tree?
Yeah.
And I'd like to invite Lieutenant Sam Scott and his crew to come up here, please. Chief Raswell. We in Missouri City Fire Department created an award. It's an internal award for commending our personnel and crews for exemplary actions or innovation or quote-unquote thinking outside the box. And our first award that we've ever, first ever Golden Axe Award that we are presenting, we are presenting to Seashift Station 1 for their actions a couple weeks ago at a call at La Quinta. Let's start back a few months ago, though. Lieutenant Scott and Justin Fox came to us and said, came to Chief Day and said, we'd like to buy these little carbon monoxide detectors to carry on our medical bags or on our persons. $150 investment. Little did we know that that $150 investment were touted to be a big save. Recently, we responded, the crew responded to a unconscious person at the La Quinta, treated the patient, little detector started going off. Well, the first thing I thought was the ambulance was actually putting the carbon monoxide, because it was parked at the front door, so it was picking up the carbon monoxide from the ambulance. But after the ambulance left, they realized that the exhaust pipe was pointing the other direction. So the crew, not willing to be satisfied, got the bigger gas detector monitor out and actually found that there was a carbon monoxide leak inside the pool area from some malfunctioning equipment. There is no doubt that these gentlemen resolve not just to take, to dismiss this alarm, saved many lives that evening. appearance as an officer with the Missouri City Police Department. So on the behalf of Chief Day and myself, Lieutenant Scott, Justin Fox, John Wallace, you were riding up that day, and Chris Coleman, we'd like to present to y'all the first ever To give you a little background on Dasty, who by the way is about to turn eight years Missouri City Fire and Rescue Golden Axe Award for your great actions on that day. of age, he was born in Czechoslovakia, and although people have said that he speaks Czech, So good job, guys. Proud of y'all. he actually only understands Czech. He was brought to the U.S. by Worldwide K-9, and that's who we acquired him from. He began his career with Missouri City in 2007, so he's reaching the term of a service dog's, you know, life to do well. But he has done well since he's been here. He is directly responsible for the seizure of more than 107 pounds of marijuana, 346 Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. ounces of cocaine, over 700 illegal pills, and more than $35,000 in U.S. currency.
All right.
He's assisted not only the officers here in Missouri City, but also the cities of Sugar Land Police Department, Stafford Police Department, Richmond Police Department, Arcola Police Department, the Harris County Precinct 7 Constable's Office, the Fort Bend County Sheriff's Department, Texas Department of Public Safety, the Drug Enforcement Administration, and also the East Fort Bend County Special Crimes Unit. After he leaves tonight, he'll partner up with his new partner, who is Pete, standing up here, four years old, and Peyton's back there on mom's lap. So we're going to miss him, and I think he deserves a round of applause for doing a great job here in Missouri City.
Can we do a picture? Yeah. Good job. One, two. Down, down. Switch, man. Down goes. Go on. And I will say, and I know that Chief Harrison was here, and some of these guys in the back room, had that been shallow, we wouldn't have had, we wouldn't have come in here. Shallow was, I guess, let's see, Dasty is our fourth police dog. With Shallow, we had Flash. Ozim. That's five. So our next one will be number six.
106 pounds, right there. 106.
All right. Item four, public comments. I did not have anyone sign up to make public comments, so item five were staff reports. And item 5A is a presentation of the Missouri City Police Department 2012 Year in Review.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, our members of city management. Let's get started. All right, this is our 2012 Year in Review. It's kind of hard to follow up after Samantha's heroics, so I'll try to get through this and make this as productive as all the ceremonies we had before. Based upon questions that we've gotten from citizens this year, we added a demographic component to the front of our presentation to show how Missouri City's demographics within the department have slightly changed since 2009. Not to belabor the point on this particular slide, but you'll notice that the increased diversity amongst officers within Missouri City. And on slides to, or after this, you'll see that not only the demographic profile of officers of all ranks, but the demographic profile of supervisors in particular has taken a change and become more diverse. I think that's a product of us going to a different testing system and bringing in outside assessors to evaluate people in the process of obtaining promotions within the city of Missouri City Police Department. As you see in the fourth slide, it says the future of MCP will come from all walks of life, and that's true. We have a very diverse department, and we are aiming to make it as diverse as this great city. Statistically, I always go over the methods for which we calculate or compile the stats that we give you every year. We use the hierarchy method, and that's based out of our UCR format, Uniform Crime Reporting, is what we use. It counts the most serious offenses in any particular incident. And as you know, most of the agencies in the Houston metropolitan area, heck, within the country themselves, use UCR reporting. And UCR offers an apples-to-apples comparison for us to measure ourselves against other agencies and to, in particular, look at what's trending crime-wise in other areas and direct ourselves in deployment accordingly. Our Part 1 offenses are our most serious offenses. As you see, we go over the top seven, but many do not know that arson is the eighth Part 1 offense. These are the most serious offenses, and every year, of course, we aim to drive these numbers down even further. Our stats in Part 1, or violent crimes, crimes against the person, you'll see, is down slightly over 2011, and down remarkably versus 2010, and 2009 for that matter, and subsequent years. We've really done a much better job in the last few years of trying to drive down the crimes against person here in Missouri City. It's something that we focused on, and judging by what we're seeing in the decline, we hope to keep that going even further. You'll notice in other categories like robberies and rapes in particular, we've had only slight decreases, I should say, in just robbery in and of itself. So again, we're seeing progress, we're seeing incremental progress, but it takes the efforts of all the police officers and police, members of the police administrative staff that I have here today, a cohesive effort to make sure these numbers are declining. Our crimes against property, our crimes against property are perhaps our most frequent crimes that we have. They include burglaries, criminal mischief. I should take away, criminal mischief's are not part of Part 1 crimes. Criminal mischief will not be Part 1, it would be Part 2. However, our Part 1 crimes include burglaries and the different thefts and other portions of the Part 1 crimes that are against property that are delineated down on the bottom of this slide. What you'll notice is that against other years, we've done remarkably well in this category. We've worked very hard because the citizens of Missouri City have partnered with us to drive these numbers down by listening to our crime prevention message, by participating in it, by coming to their HO meetings, HOA meetings, and hearing what we have to say and integrating what we say into what we do as an organization, and to help us drive numbers down by being more proactive themselves. So a great deal of this progress is due to the fact that the community has stepped up and really taken the crime prevention effort on, head-on, and helped us reduce our numbers. Crimes against persons, again, these are just better graphs that actually give you, you know, an idea of what type of impact we've had on these numbers. It's been up and down for a couple years, but you'll see in this slide in particular, murder, which is key, is a number that, thank God, we've been able to keep down over the last two years at least. And we aim to keep that number down as much as we can. Our Part 1 crimes is a better look at a pie chart on crimes in a nutshell for the last few years. 2010 being the most rocky time we've had in my tenure here, but 2012 becoming more stable. 2012 being one of which we've experienced a decrease in sorts, and citywide Part 1 crimes are down, and I think most of the neighbors that go to each one of these HOA meetings would confirm that for us. This graph, albeit, I think people in the audience may have a little trouble seeing, but if you look, you'll see the things that are highlighted in green are really numbers that you may want to concentrate on. And that's, I'll go from right to left, and in the bottom portion, you'll see 969. The 969 number represents our total Part 1 crimes. And you'll see in 2012, 969 versus the year prior, 1,219. A remarkable decrease in that area. And again, the thanks go to the men and women in the department, the people in the community that are looking out, making phone calls, giving us an idea of who's causing problems in any individual neighborhood, and actually helping us, you know, conclude a lot of our investigations. Every year, I talk about family violence. These are some of the assaults that we see that, you know, we don't really have a lot of control over what goes on in people's homes. However, in the very last meeting, we were able to establish contact with the women that were helping battered women here in Fort Bend County, and it just gave us another resource, another, you know, means by which we could give a woman, or man even, information if they're in a situation that is potentially going to lead to family violence or has, you know, or they have experienced family violence. Family violence is something, again, that, you know, we've really focused on. We've had our victim's assistance officer and detectives follow up on many of these family violence calls, even those that did not necessitate an arrest. If we receive a call and we believe that that family violence call is something that has propensity to recur or get worse, what we'll do is we'll have our detective or the victim's liaison get in touch with them to try to establish the means by which people will know how to get out of relationships and potential combustious situations that might lead to a family violence offense. Accidents by year and by beat, our accidents are somewhat down this year. We still are experiencing problems in certain areas. Our Beat David area in particular is probably our busiest, obviously, and having Highway 6 run through our Beat David, that's still an area of concern for us. And it's one of the things that we'd like to do, is attack it differently. And by attacking it differently, we are hoping that the motorcycles that we proposed will be something that can drive those numbers down. We want to aim to correct bad driving behaviors and reduce the number of collisions we have in the city. And, you know, it's great to have great crime numbers, but accidents and mobility are key, and there are things that people care about very much when they have to come to work and come home from work every day. So we want to keep the mobility angle going in the city, and by doing so, and reducing the number of accidents we can. Our total larceny, we look at larceny or thefts, shopliftings for the layperson. And two, we look at it really two ways. We look at thefts that happen in any neighborhood within Missouri City, but we also like to break it down per box store. We've experienced a great deal of time and effort and response to arrests that happen inside of a box store, box stores being your larger establishments that we have in the city. They don't make up a huge percentage of the total thefts that happen in the city, but just by working with the box stores on programs that we do now, some of which are getting anti-shoplifting information out, moving our shell cars out into areas or to lots, to which these, to which we've experienced more crime in any one particular box store. There are things that we're doing to help mitigate possible crimes in these areas, but what we like to do is target the particular stores that we see the most activity in. And albeit, again, I'll have to reinforce that that activity is not that great. However, if we're able to reduce these things in any one particular store, then we can move on to the next and perhaps drive all the numbers down. Citywide UCR crimes, family violence makes up 61% of all of our Part 1 crimes in the city. Again, that's a, that's a huge issue. You know, you're looking at our 2011 numbers at 61%, but last year, I spoke to you about this and talked about some of the things that we were trying to do to drive that number down, and I spoke about it again tonight, but you'll notice the arrow to the far right indicates that it only makes up 40% of all of our Part 1 crime this year. So we have had a specific impact upon the amount and rate of family violence that we have in the city. Our citywide UCR Part 2 crimes, Part 2 crimes are sometimes called lesser crimes. I call crimes crimes, so albeit we're down in Part 2 crimes, we'd like to be further down. We'd like to decrease those numbers as much as we would our Part 1 crimes. If we can drive the numbers down across the board, it makes for a better way of life and, you know, more livable situation here in Missouri City. This is just a, this slide is a synopsis of the total of Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, and what our total percentage is being down. If you combine those numbers, you know, over the course of two years, you're looking at huge, huge changes and huge declines. Again, the men and women in the department are the ones whose backs we're working on, going out there and making this thing possible and making us a livable and a potentially vibrant city, even more vibrant than we already are. When people see these type of things, they see the positives that happen in the city, and it makes them want to reinvest here. And I'm hoping that, you know, by decreasing crime, we're doing our part to make this one of the best cities that it can possibly be. In 2012, we got a lot accomplished. Our city and our police department had They don't make up a huge percentage of the total thefts that happened in the city, but just by working with the box stores on programs that we do now, some of which are getting the anti-shoplifting information out, moving our shell cars out into areas or to lots, to which these, to which we've experienced more crime in any one particular box store. There are things that we're doing to help mitigate possible crimes in these areas, but what we like to do is target the particular stores that we see the most activity in, and albeit, again, I'll have to reinforce that that activity is not that great. However, if we're able to reduce these things in any one particular store, then we can move on to the next and perhaps drive all the numbers down. Citywide UCR crimes, family violence makes up 61% of all of our Part One crimes in the city. Again, that's a, that's a huge issue. You know, you're looking at our 2011 numbers at 61%, but last year I spoke to you about this and talked about some of the things that we were trying to do to drive that number down, and I spoke about it again tonight, but you'll notice the arrow to the far right indicates that it only makes up 40% of all of our Part One crime this year. So we have had a specific impact upon the amount and rate of family violence that we have in the city. Our citywide UCR Part Two crimes, Part Two crimes are sometimes called lesser crimes. I call crimes crimes, so albeit we're down in Part Two crimes, we'd like to be further down. We'd like to decrease those numbers as much as we would our Part One crimes. If we can drive the numbers down across the board, it makes for a better way of life and a, you know, more livable situation here in Missouri City. This is just a, this slide is a synopsis of the total of Part One and Part Two crimes and what our total percentage is being down. If you combine those numbers, you know, over the course of two years, you're looking at huge, huge changes and huge declines. Again, the men and women in the department are the ones whose backs we're working on, going out there and making this thing possible and making us a livable and a potentially vibrant city, even more vibrant than we already are. When people see these type of things, they see the positives that happen in the city, and it makes them want to reinvest here. And I'm hoping that, you know, by decreasing crime, we're doing our part to make this one of the best cities that it can possibly be. In 2012, we got a lot accomplished. Our city and our police department had undergone problems, as you know, in council with retaining our telecommunications officers. One of our new telecommunications officers was honored tonight along with Samantha, you know, in reference to that 911 call. This is one that we hired after council made it easier for us to hire by adjusting some of the pay scales of telecommunications officers. We have achieved our full complement as of next Monday for our telecommunications officers, and with the next, well, with the test we just gave on Saturday, we hope to achieve 100% again in staffing with the PD. We ran Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command. As you know, that's a nationally accredited program, a very highly respected program, and I think that as we become more and more of a leader in law enforcement in the Houston area, then we'll also be recognized as a leader in training and development of our officers, and I think that's very important for the pride of the officers, you know. The pride of the officers is one thing, however, the city, what it brings back in return, it can be exponential, and we're able to expose, you know, some of these national programs to the joy of actually hosting something here in Missouri City, and that's very important. Our command strategies have been to work in development of our supervisors and our employees, so we've brought in speakers like Kevin Johnson on the last slide to talk about ethics and other trainings that have helped shape the men and women that work in this department and that hopefully make you very happy. Our chaplain program, our first chaplain, Dr. Charles Murphy, has officiated a lot of our programs and has been a tremendous help, especially in the areas of some of our violent crimes and our family violence. He's responded to these incidents, heck, he's even responded to problems we've had where an officer may have needed to speak to a chaplain or had made use of him or their families have made use of them. So it's not just relegated to the police department, he's worked within the fire department, and he does it gratis. We're hoping to expand that program to involve other chaplains. We had a heck of a lot of them come out that were interested in being a part of the program, and we're hoping to bolster our numbers there and take a little bit off his back. We've made strides with trying to reduce the amount of paperwork we generate. We've transitioned to OSSI, we did so in November this year, going up live with the help of, I was looking for Bill, but IT. IT was crucial in making sure that this was a seamless process for us, and I think you'll see the related benefits of us having a more efficient system using OSSI as our software package. This is another one of the training sessions that we've held. We had officers from around the Houston metropolitan area come in for Penn State University. The mayor and myself have been talking to Penn State University in reference to addressing a national forum, plenary forum of law enforcement administrators. They're interested in how we're doing, what we're doing here in Missouri City, how we're working together as a police department and as a city government, and how that happens so well. And we hope that by doing more of these type of national level trainings, by bringing in people from various backgrounds and a diverse number of people, that we're able to really put ourselves on the map and actually expand our offerings to the Houston area, and not so much just the Houston area, but our officers themselves and their own personal and professional development. You'll notice here that our block training concept is mentioned. What we do with block training is compress all of the mandatory training that officers need to have within a week. So I'm not saying every officer would get their training within the same week. What happens is we would take a shift of officers, put them through the same classes that they would have to have in the one week's, in one week's time, and have another shift substitute for them. And the benefit of this is that we're not sending people all over to Houston metropolitan area to have them trained. We're training them here in Missouri City, we're training them in a condensed period of time, and we're getting them back out on the street. As you see, Officer Tracy Cox told us 100% of our department is CPR certified. I'm glad he reminded me of this. We're the only police department around that's 100% CPR certified. And we provide our officers with the lateral mask, so every officer has one, as do most of our personnel in the dispatch center. I choose to follow the rules, has been a tremendous boon for Missouri City. We've been able to host kids from various elementary schools in the entire Fort Ben County School District, the schools that actually lie in Missouri City, and we've touched greater than 1,500 students. I can tell you that we aspire year to year, and I'll say, Mr. Emery pressed us last year to be really, really aggressive about how many kids we touched, and we did hit that 1,500 mark, and we plan on hitting, I want to say 1,700 is what we targeted for next year. So we're meeting those kids at between third and fifth grade, trying to touch them early and often and change the way they view law enforcement, but better yet, get them in tune with how to stay out of problems and how to stay out of trouble, and to know that police are just a resource for them and not an entity for them to be afraid of. The Consequences Program is to reinforce to some of the older kids, again, some of the things we have to, you have to avoid as growing adults, some of the things that could potentially harm you if you're looking to go get accepted into a college. Again, another important program, and one that our city manager actually got behind very early on when he started here. So it's, we've been teaching the Consequences Program now in conjunction with the Fort Ben County Sheriff's Department, and again, it's been successful for us, and we'll aim to touch more kids this year with that program as well. Police Department is up again for recognition certification this year, but we maintained our status last year. We will be reaccredited this year, so you'll find that we'll be working very hard to meet all of the rigorous tenants that they ask us to meet to maintain our recognition. We exceed some of their recommendations in many areas, so I put a lot more pressure on the rest of the police department to exceed these standards, and I don't foresee there being a problem obtaining re-recognition. Our dispatch center, I talked about how well they've been doing, and we saw that tonight, but one of the things about dispatch that has really facilitated the change is adding that third supervisor. We have three shifts, we only had two supervisors in there. That didn't make sense. We approached the city manager, and the city manager was gracious enough to make sure we had 24-hour oversight. That has made a huge difference in service delivery in the dispatch center. Our systems common channel, another no-brainer for us was to go up so that if something happened in Sugar Land, Stafford, or anywhere else, immediately each agency would hear what's going on. Our dispatch, our support services captain, Robert Gert from Systems Administration, they got the channel up and running, and now each one of those agencies from around us use the same frequency to transmit when a priority assignment comes out. So if there's a shooting, a robbery, or rape, anything that comes over to Systems Common Channel, everyone hears it at once. You'll see we put building cooperation and collaboration on Texas Parkway. Never in a million years would I've thought that we would have had the positive response that we've had with the mini station. I knew it was something that needed to happen. However, the tremendous positive feedback that I've gotten from having a mini station out there is really overwhelming, and it's something that we all should be very proud of because I know that not only did city management, but city council had a lot to do with that project taking off, and I think we're reaping the benefits now. And although we've only had it open a half year, some of the declines we've seen, I believe, is attributed to getting better feedback from the community, information being received, calls being made to 911. Those are the things that most police departments would shy away from, but we want those calls because the more information we get, the more we know how to direct our personnel, and that's very important. We have an open and honest relationship with citizens here, and it's just made for tremendous leaps in information sharing. You'll see something to the right. So it's, the graph's pretty small, but that number and the scale on the far right-hand side is just showing you the number of calls that the mini stations handled. That's since we began capturing the calls that we've got at the mini stations. So I believe that number is 145. That number pales in a comparison to the number of people that we actually have had coming to the mini station and asked for information, or just come in, sit down, and have a cup of coffee with officers in there. We have Fort Ben County Sheriff's Department officers in there. As you see, we have tons of cars from Fort Ben County over there, not so many from the Missouri City Police Department because we just, you know, we can't, we can't do the same thing, obviously, that Fort Ben does over there, but we're happy to have the presence there. And the presence says something about the positive relationship, not only that we have with the community, but the positive relationship that we have with Fort Ben County. And again, Councilman Smith, that was in your area as well, and I thank you for the support you had out there because, again, council and everyone with the city that had something to do with that project, thank you. And Bob, Councilman Marshall, the same thing with you. You know, you guys got behind us there, and that really made a difference there, and I get that feedback from the members of the community when I stop in and I talk to them, and they're happy that that mini station's there. Our CID remodel was another highlight. We were pressed for space for CID, and we remodeled the old dispatch area to accommodate the added detectives that we have there. Most of you don't know, we also offer a co-location with some of the people from SEU or some of our federal partners at times, so we really needed the space over there, and we had to make room or make do, I should say, with some of the area that we had that was left over when we moved the old dispatch area from the location where the new CID is over to the EOC. So it's all centralized now, all the detectives are in one area, and each one of their supervisors are co-located there as well. Municipal court and COBAN and our partnerships there, we've worked with municipal court doing several warrant roundups and work with them to try to facilitate the service of warrants that are in the city. We could do a better job there, and we're trying to work with municipal court, and we've heard the city management, we've heard council, and we realize that, again, there are things that we can do, and I know this isn't on the slide, but we need to make sure that we do what we can to serve as many warrants as we can to clean up, you know, some of the things that we've had problems with as far as warrant management in the city. COBAN technology's helped us get a lot of our information together. The interview rooms facilitated a re-accreditation of our juvenile, our juvenile interview rooms. That's key because we would not be able to facilitate doing those interviews in our own facility had we not passed that process. So that was done. And again, a lot of cooperation went in by enhancing our relationship between municipal courts and the police department. Our National Police Week function every year seems to be growing. We're able to get more and more people out there each year. It's in the third week of May, and we're hoping that the citizens that are here today and that hear this message decide to come on out and support Police Week. It's to honor the fallen officers around the country, and in particular here in Texas. And what we do is sometimes labeled as a moving ceremony. I just feel like it's something or a time to give back to those who have fallen, to support policing and to, you know, the people that have been selfless. It's important that people come out and at least understand what the message is about, and it's hard to recite the message now without going into a long diatribe, but as you see by the pictures, the ceremony is, as described, it is moving, and people have appreciated it coming out of that ceremony. Mary, you always have some very poignant words to say at that ceremony, and I'm hoping that more of the people that are, that visit city council and are interested in what goes on in the city decide to take part in that. Our National Night Out, as you know, National Night Out has been done in two locations in the city. It's done in Fort, it's actually done out on Highway Six in front of Target, but we also have, had expanded it down to the mini station area over on Texas Parkway across the street. So we've had a tremendous amount of positive feedback from both locations. The Texas Parkway location is growing more and more each year, and this year I have something special planned that I can't divulge now, but I think the Texas Parkway version of National Night Out will be just as grand and just as large as our Ron and Target on Highway Six. Our Stuff the Squad Car charitable event every year has expanded more and more. We have never failed to hit our target mark on how many police cars we want to fill out there, and this year our biggest donor was Classic Chevrolet, and I can tell you that each year it grows more and more, and the charity from the people that live here in Missouri City can't go understated. I can tell you that each year we exceed the number of police cars we attempt to stuff. Some more highlights, I'll briefly cut through, you'll see some of the promotions that we've done. That was something that hadn't been done till 2009. We hadn't had promotional ceremonies in this city, and quite frankly, that's something that needed to start happening. Our award ceremonies, another thing. Right around the time of Police Week, actually, a week before, we'll have an awards and promotional ceremony, and again, another time that we can give back to those that served the city selflessly. Some of the other highlights, Lieutenant Burleson graduated from the FBI National Academy. A huge part of that was that he was the first person in Missouri City to ever win the blue brick for swimming. A lot of times you hear about them winning, getting the yellow brick for doing the Yellow Brick Road, but the blue brick indicated that he swam for 34 miles, which is a tremendous accomplishment. Lieutenant Merritt finished modules one and two of Bill Blackwood Institute. We've had myself, I went to Harvard and finished their senior executives in state and local government program. We've had Assistant Chief Jimison also graduated from Northwestern and senior management in policing, so we're investing a lot in making sure that the people that are running the police department here have a really global perspective on what's going on nationally and trying to integrate some of those national standards here that help us function more efficiently, and hopefully you see it in the form of better service. Sergeant Broussard is another person who we've sent to some executive development programs, and he wrote a very poignant thank you to us for sending him. I think you'll find that, you know, we've had supervisors respond to a few scenes lately, and I've gotten calls just praising and extolling the interactions that they have with members of the community. Our grant awards, I won't go through all of them, but they're substantial. We've really made it, we've really put a emphasis upon seeking out grant monies that are applicable to what we're trying to do here in Missouri City and what we're trying to accomplish. And as you see with the numbers that are spattered about there, we've done a very good job of offsetting some of the costs that we would have to push onto budgetary line items and trying to make sure that we can go out and seek the money that's out there. And Mary, I know you've been instrumental as well in trying to work with DOJ and getting us some of these awards, so thank you as well. Our CPR and AEDs, I talked about all of our persons being trained in CPR, however, we've got AEDs around the building with the help of the fire department. That was a big coup for us. 84% of our officers are either intermediate-level peace officers or eligible for higher rankings. That's key because many agencies have people that have basic certifications and don't reinvest in the officers, we do, and having such a high complement of officers that eligible, eligible for higher certifications is a, is a big boon to the citizen of Missouri City. The training hours, you can read that, that's, we dedicate a lot of training hours, however, a lot of the training hours that I talked about earlier are condensed within that block training. Couple more numbers, just breaking down how the younger officers or the new hires make up the officers that have those lowest percents of basic officer training. So as soon as they're eligible, we move on to get those, we move on to get those people trained. Our vision, moving on, trying to get the traffic unit up and running, looking at a regional crime lab, we talked about some DNA investigative abilities. We're also going to try to expand our use of IPs to reduce the number of burglaries we have in the city. We talked about training facilities and meetings we've had over the last few weeks, and police headquarters, that's something that's on our wish list in the future. Community outreach doesn't stop at just the police and fire, but the police and fire auxiliary, I should say, doesn't stop at HOAs, but the police and fire auxiliary have been key. We encourage people to get into the police and fire academy and learn about what we do each day. Home and buildings inspections, every officer we're going to have taught to certify for home inspections. That doesn't work for every insurance company, however, what's good is if an officer comes in, there's the potential that there could be a reduction in your homeowner's policy if an officer does the homeowner's inspection. You know about our drug program? We've been... We've been tremendously successful with that in 2012 and we hope to get a new drug box over in the mini station to double our efforts. Seventy pounds of pills, 56 in 2012 and 14 pounds, close to 15 pounds in 2013 so far. And our commitment, again, to the HOA program and our interactive nature with the residents is something that we can't say enough about. I said in the beginning and I'll close on this note, without our interactive nature, without the exchanges we have with the homeowners' associations, we wouldn't be able to drive the crimes down, we wouldn't be able to move in the directions that we move in with a lot of our programs. So thank you for all your support and thank you to the citizens of Missouri City because they deserve the real pat on the back for moving us along and my officers as well because without them, you wouldn't have me up here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, that's a great report. I have two questions.
Yes, Mayor.
One, maybe Scott can help us, but have the medians cut down on our accidents? When you were talking about accidents, everybody complained about them, but the whole purpose of the medians along Highway 6 was to reduce that traffic accident number that the chief alluded to.
We have seen an anecdotal decrease in accidents, talking to police officers on the street. They have seen a reduction in number of accidents both on Texas Parkway and on Highway 6. We're really awaiting on a six-month after installation and do a more formal study on that.
Okay. And the other one is more of a comment, Chief, than anything else, and I've said this before. I think a lot of our statistics are not homegrown. A lot of our statistics come from the large city next door to us and I just want to compliment our officers for doing what they're doing to lock those guys up because as I've said before, you come to Missouri City and do a crime, you're going to do the time.
I agree with that.
And I just hate that it, you know, it looks like we've got, you know, the numbers that we do in Missouri City, but I think it's important for our citizens to know, yeah, we've got, we've got our own crime, but a lot of our crime is not homegrown. And if they saw the same emails that we see from those guys that are getting put in jail every day and our officers are putting them, they're not Missouri City addresses. And I just want to compliment our guys for, you know, doing what other cities should be doing to keep the crimes out of their city because hopefully the word's going to get out, if you come out here, you're going to go to jail.
They do a heck of a job, Mayor, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, along with what the mayor said, I think compliments to the whole department for everything you all do, especially with HOA programs and all that. I just wanted to just, there's two questions that comes up all the time for me is, one is the UCR reporting versus some other type of reporting.
Yes.
Can you explain that a little bit?
In the past, we had, when I first got here, we were using IBR, Incident-Based Reporting. Incident-Based Reporting counts every, every particular crime that happens, period. And it breaks it down one by one and not an ongoing event. So the best way to give you an example would be the robbery example I get probably every year and that's, you know, if a guy goes into a bank and he holds up the bank and he, in essence, robs the bank, that would be one, counted as one robbery under UCR. Under IBR, if the person's in the bank, if he took money from everybody inside the bank, he would get one robbery for each one of those numbers. The problem with that is when being compared to other cities, we were compared with cities that did not use IBR type of ranking. So when, in trying to explain that to some of the people that were covering it, they were improperly measuring us against cities that did not use the same type of reporting system, which led to problems. So we decided to go with the UCR.
Just a follow-up on it, so is our neighboring city using the UCR?
Yes, they do.
So they are?
Yes, sir.
So we were also, so we switched to be more on the uniform side?
Correct.
That's what it was. Okay, following, part two was, you know, as Mayor talked about on Highway 6, the medians, you know, reduction in accidents, that was one of my questions too, but I think you answered it. The other thing is text driving. Have we gotten any type of numbers or is there any datas out there that shows that how many that we regulated or, because as, again, as a comment, I see a lot of people swerving back and forth, especially in the morning and in the afternoon. And you can clearly tell, when you come up to the, to the left or right side of them, you know that's what they're doing.
Oh, it's funny.
The chief was talking about that the other day.
The mayor asks that all the time. I don't have the numbers handy for, I can tell you that we have issued tickets for it. You know, it is a reason why an officer is able to get a car pulled over and to begin an investigation. Texting is something that we're serious about. There are more and more cities across the country, heck, more, you know, commercials are seeing on a national level that just address texting and driving. And again, it may not be popular, it may not be something that people want to talk about, but the bottom line is it reduces accidents if we have that enforcement initiative in place. And how many times we get to use it is something that gets brought up all the time, but I believe that just by having something like this in place here, it says a lot about our city and a lot about our city council that we're willing to be one of the few in the great state of Texas to stand up and have that, you know, deterrent there. And as you see, when you drive up and down Highway 6, you'll see the, you know, we have on the digital boards, you know, you know, don't text and drive and how many deaths there are this year and tech, you know, related to accidents on highways. So if we can mitigate it just by one, isn't that enough to have that still in place? I'd say so.
We've got to convince the governor not to veto the bill.
Thank you. You're welcome.
But Chief, I guess, I'll kind of echo what both Robin and the mayor said, and that's the HOA program. When I go to HOA meetings, the one thing that folks really are appreciative of is our officers being there, giving us the crime statistics for their area, answering their questions, telling them what's available out there. So, you know, I think that's something that we can be proud of and I know that we're going to, you know, continue to strengthen that alliance with the HOAs because, you know, they're the eyes and ears of our neighborhoods and they're the ones that can really help us.
Well, I appreciate that and not to get too far ahead of you, but, you know, we just talked a few weeks ago and I was on top of actually having one of the crime analysts walk a couple through how to use ATAC rays and how to track what's going on in their neighborhoods. And without the message being out there, they wouldn't know to ask for that. And that's why it's been so important and such a useful tool for us. Transparency has been a boon for Missouri City in general here.
I would just like to say that, whether you realize it or not, I think the level of service that you all provide has created an expectation of what our citizens want and that's the measure that we have to continue to uphold. Y'all do such a good job at y'all putting pressure on us and we appreciate that.
And the pressure doesn't stop at you.
I think you just put some pressure on Russell back there to do an annual report like this. Those guys on that back row, you know, they, they need to be patted on the back too, but Russell may need to do one of these. Paige, you may have to help him with this. Actually, you're working on that? Attaboy.
I got it. I bet he is. I got to say this though, the city manager's already been on us about, about working to get maybe a citywide annual report together that sort of mirrors that, so.
Public safety, period. Because these guys, I mean, as I said before, Chief, they, you know, both of our Police Department, Fire Department do an outstanding job. All of us up here, we don't get complimented what we do, but we get complimented what you two agencies do and that's what it's about really. Good. Thank you. Great report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Boy, that's going to make the comprehensive plan look boring. Who got it? Yeah, Mr. Gary.
I hope, oh, good, the PowerPoint's here. Listening to the chief and Mr. Lee's joining me because the Planning and Zoning Commission is who's charged with delivering the report to you, but as I thought through it, it's as exciting because you can see how we are achieving the goals as the council, as the city, as the community that are set forth on the comprehensive plan. Chapter six of the comprehensive plan charges the Planning and Zoning Commission with the responsibility of giving you a progress report. The report relates to significant actions and accomplishments, obstacles or problems in implementation, proposed amendments or recommended actions, programs, and procedures. That's from the comprehensive plan. If you chant, when you get through with this, you'll see we're talking mainly about the accomplishments that we've seen. Staff assists the commission in preparation of this. The staff work group on this report included Stacy Walker, Sharon Valiant, Valerie Marvin, Jennifer Thomas, and Larry Foose. Now if I can figure out how to work this. Good. Comprehensive plan, you know what it is? It's the framework that guides our future development and redevelopment of the city. It's the vision the citizens and this council put together for what Missouri City is to be. It sets forth realistic and achievable goals and strategies. The land development regulations, the engineering standards that are employed when people come in for development and redevelopment ensure that the form, the character, and the quality of development that are reflected in the comprehensive plan are carried forward. The elements of the comprehensive plan, there are five. Land use and community character, growth capacity, parks and recreation, mobility, and the final element is implementation. Under the first element, there are five goals, cover the first three first. The first one is a more cohesive city. Second one, moving beyond the bedroom community perception, and the third is increasing focus on neighborhood integrity and commercial redevelopment. I think the two major factors we have seen in Missouri City on our cohesive city, city center and the Recreation and Tennis Center, where the city came together to have those happen. To further connect our city and make it more cohesive, we're participating in a bicycle and pedestrian path study through HGAC. We're also doing it at a staff level to extend that study into the neighborhoods. Another example of it is the Oyster Creek Trail, which now extends from Sugar Land into, all the way to Mosley Park on 1092. Moving beyond the bedroom community, we have Lakeview Business Park, which if Bob has told me correctly and my memory's any good, there are basically two lots left out there. The rest are spoken for or under development. Also, the development we have seen along South Gessner and Cravens Road. In the photo is what we always call Cookie Baker or Twin Star Bakery, a fabulous building with an incredible opportunity for growth. We also have the proposed industrial and commercial development that was recently approved in a planned development district along the Fort Ben Toll Road between Lake Olympia Parkway and Trama Fresno Road. Our increasing and ongoing focus on neighborhood integrity and commercial redevelopment, two factors I'll cite, one is the emphasis that this council insists that we give through code enforcement. The other are the plans that are in the beginning stages for redevelopment, putting forth concrete plans, redeveloping Texas Parkway, ways to have it happen, and you've heard presentation already about 90A and the development in that area. The last two goals in this element, public and private development and design practices that encourage resource conservation and protection and quality design and community appearance. The first photo is at Benny Keith and it's not the best one, but it's the one I could get where they buried the hollow black plastic boxes so they could harvest rainwater and recycle it and use it in their operations to conserve their water consumption. We also, on top of our adopting a water conservation plan and industrial waste ordinance to protect our resources, we also are providing for low-impact development. The Melus tract was one of the first to use it. We will allow other people to use low-impact development if they do it according to standards and we've chosen to parallel the standards that Harris County Flood Control is using. Quality design and community, I went too fast, quality design and community appearance, this is a photograph from Sienna, but you can see our new sign ordinance, our architectural standards that we have had in place and our code enforcement emphasis. And the way we use those as development comes along, you can see the impact and the quality and the appearance we have in Missouri City. And growth capacity, providing for basic utility services, orderly growth of the community so that our infrastructure and public service capacities support that growth, development patterns and targeted growth areas consistent with our service capacities. Our surface water treatment plant is maybe the jewel and the crown of our utility work. That is the crowning achievement of the groundwater reduction plan and that group, I don't know of any other place that could put that many governmental entities together and get them to cooperate and get positive results and not have it just quit working. It's worked, it continues to work, it's something that was uniquely Missouri City and something Missouri City should be very proud of. Also, we're seeing consolidation of the Mustang Bayou Service Area, improvements in our wastewater treatment plants and joint efforts in wastewater treatment plants so that our utilities are taken care of. We see the continued development as we desire it, as you see Riverstone continue to develop, as Sienna continues to develop according to the plans that were set forth in the past to meet the quality that is desired. Perhaps the most fun one that I could spend a great deal of time on, Parks and Recreation. Quality of life and develop parklands at a rate recognized by statewide as a standard of excellence. We have a program that's been recognized at the state level in the Edible Arbor Trail. In the local area, our Junior Arborist Program has been recognized, Community Roots Program, the Wright Tree Trail, the Buffalo Run Prairie Restoration Project, Memorial Tree Program, Stamo Reforestation Project, and Three for Trees Program. Park and Leisure Facilities that offer a wide range of passive and active recreational opportunities. I have half a page listed here, pavilions, athletic fields, the Recreation and Tennis Center, the trail system, improvements at Buffalo Run Park, at Hunter's Glen Park, the Spray Park at Hunter's Glen, which is cooperative activity, improvements over at the Freedom Tree Park. Throughout the community, the park system has been improved and it provides those facilities and activities. Special events that offer activities for people and those special events that pop to mind first are tree lighting ceremony and the Snow Fest Parade, Dad and Daughter Dance, Egg Palooza, the Fourth of July fireworks and carnival. We offer a wide range of activities, recreational programs, and classes for citizens of all ages. And we have a trail system. I've mentioned the Oyster Creek Trail. Internal trail system at Independence Park, the trail system at McNaulson Park, variety of other trails, and again, the Edible Arbor Trail, not to leave it out or to forget it at all. Our system enhances the aesthetics throughout the, not only park system, but throughout the city by maintaining the flower beds and the shrub beds in our parks and on all city property. They oversee the mowing contracts for the parks and the medians and rights of ways. And perhaps a little-known fact, between 2008 and 2012, 1,641 trees were planted in Missouri City through the efforts of our Parks Department and the folks that have cooperated with them. Ultimately, the goal is within each park to have a zone for active recreation and for passive recreation and the goal is to have it split 50/50. A new master parks plan is being developed. Mobility, I left out the medians, y'all have talked about the medians. We want a regional transportation network, a system of We want a regional transportation network, a system of arterial and collector roadways that provide connectivity within the city, mobility system that offers a variety of choice, modes of travel, and roadways that accommodate all users. The intelligent transportation system, you have a photograph of their control center. It moves traffic through the community much better. We have a traffic management plan, a thoroughfare plan, the metro park and ride location at Fort Ben Town Center. And the connectivity, remember, Fort Ben Parkway is under construction to Sienna Parkway. The frontage roads will continue to Sienna Ranch Road. They're on the way. They will be completed, I wish I remembered the date, in the near future. Sienna Ranch, excuse me, Sienna Ranch Road will be completed, and Sienna Springs will be completed so that they interconnect and take traffic over to LJ Parkway. LJ Parkway will connect with University that is now complete and will give us a back, what I refer to as a back access, or another way where you can swing around, avoid Highway 6, and wind up almost at the Brazos River Bridge on Highway 59. Interconnectivity that will help that area. We have seen reconstruction, rehabilitation of roadways, South Gessner, Turtle Creek, Quail Valley East, Valley Forest, the Lake Olympia Bridge. And we, the other photograph is the realigned intersection of Thompson Ferry Road that improved safety at that intersection where it now aligns with Paradise River where it meets Oilfield Road. We are trying to provide a variety of choices in modes of travel. Bicycle and pedestrian trails with those path studies we've talked about. Continued efforts to bring commuter rail to Missouri City. The Oyster Creek Trail and the other trails within Missouri City, and the sidewalks that were constructed along Texas Parkway, all offer options for mobility. And to accommodate all users of the system, we are now employing the complete streets strategy where there's an opportunity. We're intending to use it on Greckery so that it is usable by vehicles, safely usable by bicycles and pedestrians, so they can mix together and be comfortable being side by side. Your thoroughfare plan update has implemented nearly 40% of the improvements designated as short-term in the 2011 update of that plan, making headway in getting that done. Obstacles or problems? The work group noted that perhaps our biggest challenge is the availability of raw water that will challenge us in fully implementing the groundwater reduction plan. In looking ahead, the comprehensive plan requires a five-year review. That's next year. In the next fiscal year, we will have that review, and we will report the results to you. If you have any questions, if Mr. Lee has any comments.
I'd just add one comment. Well, actually, it's two. Where will we put the golf course in this plan, in this report?
It's actually in the detailed report. I didn't put it in the highlights because it began in our work on it primarily preceded the comprehensive plan, but it's integral in what we have done. I would put it in cohesive community. It also fits in recreation.
And I just, I mean, that is such a major achievement not to have been mentioned. I mean, and maybe I'm biased. The other thing is that under transportation and mobility, Fort Ben Transportation runs a bus service in Missouri City. So we ought to be looking at what other agencies that provide services that support us, including those in our, we mentioned metro, and that's kind of natural because we are part of metro. But we need to look at what else is being provided that support the comprehensive plan. And those buses are all over Missouri City all day. In fact, they drop off in front of City Hall a couple times a day.
That is also in the detailed report that as, when I was trying to condense it, I edited that out. But indeed, they are. Matter of fact, I was over at municipal court today, saw one of the vehicles parked in the parking lot over there. They're everywhere, and they provide services that otherwise are not available as a mode of transportation.
And Ed, also, is it possible that we can have Fort Ben Transportation that at least come and tell us what they do so we can get an understanding of what they do? And particularly before school is out, maybe it may be some services that can provide some of our young people to get around the city?
We can bring them in to do some type of presentation. I mean, it's one where we're also looking at kind of our annual, you know, I want to develop an annual metro presentation to you as well, but that'll probably be in the fall for metro.
Well, Fort Ben buses are already on our streets. There's, okay, that was a big controversy about metro buses being on our street. But all I'm suggesting them because they're already operating in the city.
Even though we have been aware of each individual project, but it's very nice that you put the whole big picture together. And it's feel good that as you go along and present it to us. And I also think this is equally important is to create, to bring this new to the stakeholders that who are really matter, you know, like the business communities, developers, investors, so they know all the positive changes in our city. So I guess the question for Ed is that, I mean, how are we doing on that? What is?
Well, one of the big things we do is the State of the City address. So it's one to where, that's where we highlight, you know, many of the things you see here, but even getting into greater detail aimed at the business community about what it is, how, where's Missouri City going, and what are the things we've achieved? So the annual State of the City address hits these things very much so. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, city, State of the City address is important, but we're talking in much broader. Right now, when people type in Missouri City on the internet, I mean, I mean, we don't have a lot of negatives, and we don't have a lot of positives. So you have a plan that, you know, when they type in Missouri City, all of this positive information will pop up, you know? You know, people check.
Yeah. We're looking at an economic development website. As far as actually changing what you get when you get on Google, I don't know, I don't know what you'd get right now if you did a Google search on Missouri City, you know, what all information pops up. I know our website's something we often try to point people to, both the current city one as well as future ones.
You know, I think that could be part of the communication and marketing too, you know, where we do that. I know what you're talking about when you Google, things pop up.
Gary, I was excited when I saw that this was on the agenda because I was real curious as to what would be put on there. I noticed that under the land use and community, area number one, the more cohesive city, out of the nine items that you have here, five of them are geared towards the major projects as my councilman spoke of, is that's the, that's the city center and the tennis center. And those are certainly noteworthy, that should be something said about that positively. But I also go down to item number C, and it says an ongoing increasing focus on neighborhood integrity and commercial redevelopment as the community continues to mature. And we got one line item. One line item. One line item that says continue to emphasize, put emphasis on code enforcement activities. Is that all we got? We have one of the major concerns here. This has been a, and this is not directed at you. This has been an item that I can recall back to 2005, but that we got certain areas of this city here. And there have been harsh terms used as underserved, just totally overlooked, two Missouri cities. And then when we give our comprehensive plan, we have one line item. One line item. I think we should direct more attention to this, especially now that we got this bond referendum that's coming up in the future, and perhaps a tax increase.
We intend to continue our efforts to work toward redevelopment.
But let me say this and cut you off. I'm not expecting you to answer this. This is not directed. I think it was just appropriate for this to be said right now, Gary.
Well, I think it should also be appropriate to say that this report is a pretty good synopsis of all the things that have been going on in the city. Our comprehensive plan was developed in 2009, and, you know, it really had some lofty goals. And this is, you know, kind of addressed to the people who say that we never get anything done here. This is, no, I'm not talking about you, Don. I'm just saying in general, people say we don't get anything done. There's a heck of a lot here that we get accomplished here. And I think everyone should be commended for the work that, hard work that the employees of the city do to.
I was actually going to compliment you. I was going to say that the brain thrust that we have behind this podium here, I recall when we decided that we were going to take a hard look at what was going on over in Quail Valley, my recollection, it took us about 45 days to get mobilized, to get something done. That's the kind of brain thrust, it's kind of the zeal that I know that this council is capable of doing. But yet, but yet, we've been dealing with this Texas Parkway and Cartwright Corridor that I can recall as far back as 2005.
What, now that it's been presented to us, what happens with this report? Where does it go from here?
So for here, there's, there was just a presentation of the report is what's required. And it's one where we'll do this on an annual basis of presentation of the report from the PNZ to the council. There's nothing else for y'all to do on this right now. This is, this is what's required by the charter.
I understand, but we're not going to pretty it up something like this here? Is it going to be available to people that want a copy that know what?
We most definitely can put it together in some type of nice format to use in order to be able to publicize it. It's really probably something we'd more likely include with some of our other newsletters or emails out in relation to these items.
But I think some parts of this conversation needs to be added to this plan. I hope you took some notes. And again, I'm not criticizing, but you know, we spent 17 and a half million dollars. And I didn't talk very much about that 17 million dollars that was spent, you know, in the quality life issues of promoting, and we've taken a lot of heat over that. And I would like to see it highlighted in this plan. So if it does go out to people, they will see that it's a part of the planning process of the city. I mean, we didn't just do that by osmosis. You know, we spent some time, kind of like what Don said, to develop these things. And so, I mean, when you do something like, it's kind of like a taking credit plan, we need to get all the credit that we do in the plan.
Yeah, and I think to echo what Jerry's saying and Don's saying, I think that we take a lot of criticism for what we did with both the tennis center and the rec center. Lot of money spent, you know, here and there. And then they look at the bottom line of that facility, and it's the only way they measure it. It isn't the only way to measure it. And at some point in time, we need to come back to this council with some reports that, and Susan's sitting back there, she knows about, we've seen a tremendous increase in property values, okay, in the last year, based on what we've done as a city. And that's what I measure the bottom line by. You can't necessarily measure the bottom line by that facility itself. We're going to see that in a long-term plan in that property values, houses are selling, Susan can tell you, houses are selling much quicker today than they ever were. And the price per square foot is higher than they were a year ago, and much higher than they were two years and three years ago. That's going to, that's going to continue to be revenue for the city that's not over here in the balance sheet of either one of those facilities. But yet, it's the same pair of pants. It's a different pocket. And I think all the criticism that we take needs to be offset sometime with some of those things, the positive things that we've seen. We talk about the commercial growth, and we've heard people come to us and say, we moved our business to Missouri City because we think this is a place where our employees want to be, the property values, the education level, you know, the income level and everything is there. That's, I think, just what we're saying. That's part of our comprehensive plan is all of this stuff that we're doing, all of this revenue that we give up in tax increments and the TERS. A lot of times, the citizens don't understand that we have to give up a little bit to get something for the future. And I think we're at a point in time where some of those are beginning to reap true benefits that we need to brag a little bit about. We don't need to be sitting here saying that we're crime-ridden and gang-ridden and all that stuff and sit back and take it. I think we need to stand up and defend ourselves.
But I guess, Mayor, what I was trying to point out is that while we do get criticism for our 17 and a half million dollars that we spent on those facilities, and we've all said everything about that, but this report is great in that giving examples of everything else that this city is doing. I think this is outstanding that what the employees of this city and the city council have done.
And I don't think we have seen the long-term benefits to what Don's referring to, both in the Lakeview Business Park and the Gessner Road Commerce Park. Those are going to bring that development and that redevelopment of Cartwright and Texas Parkway. We're going to start seeing here shortly, when those, when those big units get up and their 300 and 500 employees start coming to work every day, they're going to start looking for restaurants to eat in. And they're going to start looking for nice things to see. And they're going to want them to be close to where they are. I think Texas Parkway and I think Cartwright Road are fixing to explode. And I think we're going to see what we've been talking about could happen for years. That's in Don and Bobby's district.
I've been talking about that snowball effect for years.
It's going to happen, Don. We're going to, we're going to see it.
And it's going to happen because the buildings are there, and now we just got to get them open and get the employees there.
Got to get some people that are interested in putting some money in some town center type facilities and some things that bring some retail in here to make it, make it grow. Danny knows that, he's seen it. I did it. I did it. Yeah, exactly.
When you addressed the redevelopment of when PNZ looked at this, did y'all look at rezoning to different uses as a part of the comprehensive plan versus saying, we're going to try to keep it retail when retail may no longer be applicable, it may be something different then?
We intend to address that as we go through our redevelopment review for it. We have the studies in hand. Now we have to put those studies into action. And I'm looking for time to get those plans brought forward so that we bring a viable, achievable plan together that gives us the result that our community wants.
Gary, we have a, we have a study in hand that gives us an idea as the best use for the, for the different properties we have zoned?
We, if I recall, the study primarily addresses vacant properties. We want to tie that in with the existing built properties to get the best result. I'll pick on the movie center, movie theater center. It exists there. The study that we have doesn't talk about that center because it existed. It talks about the vacant tracks primarily adjacent to City Hall, the track up at Cartwright and Texas Parkway. But we need to tie it all together so that when we get those results that we're looking for on the vacant tracks, the occupied tracks will bring us the businesses we want for the community.
What study is that?
Be careful on how we allow uses within those.
You're referring to the George Johnson Study, which even, even the principals who were involved in that says needs to be updated because it's no longer practical with what was originally imagined. At the next work session, we're planning to have a discussion with the council in relation to a study that we want to do. This isn't as far as what's the best use of it, it's to look at who is it that's along Texas Parkway? Who are the customers that we should? Who are the customers that we should be serving? Essentially to pull together information that we can then take to the retailers, the developers, to start talking about active redevelopment of some of these centers, like Gary was talking about, as well as-
That's, that's part of it, Don. But the, the part that I was talking about is, is that if somebody pick up the comprehensive plan, that they see some flexibility, that the old movie theaters must just totally go away and something totally new may go there, okay? Versus just focusing on re-, you know, I mean, twenty-two, thirty-four may not support the amount of retail that's allocated, and, you know, and, and I'm not saying it doesn't, but the flexibility there to have some new uses might be something the plan ought to reflect that we are open to.
I think, I think this was just a report, Cartwright.
That is exactly what it is. It's a report of the accomplishments. So what has been done in order, as to, in order to meet the comprehensive plan that the council has previously adopted?
So as some comments that was made here about the, you know, tennis and rec center as well as the golf course, can we add that?
The tennis and rec center is actually included in here. I believe it is, I know it's under, what, section two?
Yeah. And it's in the report itself.
As the city center is as well.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm going to be a little bit more candid about it. You know, the, the tennis and rec center falls on the parks.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Tennis, rec center, and golf are part of parks. And that's, that's what I was trying to say earlier. That distinction is not being made in here. It's like, it's separate.
The humanity.
You know?
And the other thing, I think, you know, for future comprehensive plans, I think, Ed, you know, probably would be a great idea to have some type of workshop with, you know, P N Z and, and us, looking at the next, you know, where we're going to be from five or ten years from now.
Well, that gets you into, yeah, the revision of the comp plan. So you have the comp plan that you set out and approved, two thousand nine?
Two thousand and eight, Bill.
Two thousand nine, wasn't it?
Two thousand nine.
And so, the five-year update for that is coming up in two thousand fourteen. So in two thousand fourteen, you'll do this exercise again in regards to updating, as well as maybe even changing with council and P N Z, and more than likely, I don't know how many citizens you involve, but I assume it was probably pretty extensive at that level.
Comprehensive advisory committee?
Yes.
Is that what y'all called it? I mean, the comp plan?
Yes.
Yeah, we had about thirty people on there.
Yeah. So you'll go through that exercise again in two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, Kelly?
Yes, please say something, Don.
In my years of being on the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's been easy for me to understand that the things that the city council has supported has really been to the great benefit of this community. This support up to this date is pretty comprehensive. Gary, you did a good job of delivering this. When I came here seventeen years ago, we had thirty-five thousand people here in Missouri City. Today, we got seventy thousand people. We didn't get to that point because people had not been doing their jobs. All of the people, everybody that's worked with this thing. Missouri City has got a great group of people. We're going to go further in the future. Why? Because the technology is there, and the tools are there, and the people are there to make it work. And I'm just very happy and pleased to have been a part of just a little bit of seeing what has gone on. And I hope y'all let me stay on the Planning and Zoning Commission for years to come.
Again, Gary, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Long reports, but they're good reports. Item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
She'll move.
Second.
Councilman Marshall made the motion, councilman Wynn.
Here.
Made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. Seven A are zoning, public hearings. Seven A one.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending PD Plan Development District Number Seventy-four describing the twelve-point-oh-four acre tract of land within PD Plan Development District Number Seventy-four referencing a site plan for such PD Plan Development District, providing for certain construction according to said plan, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number oh-eight-one-one, adopted on January nineteen, nineteen eighty-one, as amended, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Their motion. Who made?
Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt made the motion.
Councilman Emery made the second. Is there a discussion? Not, vote all those in favor. Motion carries. We like it looking alike. No, I mean, it's, it's very simple. It's going to look like the other building.
Exactly.
Which it needs to be, so. Yeah. Seven A two.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending section eight, PD Plan Development District of Appendix A of the Missouri City Code entitled the City of Missouri City Zoning Ordinance, amending rules and regulations pertaining to the establishment amendment of planned development districts, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
And this is the first of two readings.
Take them.
Caroline, I had asked you earlier today, why can't we restrict early on, and say like, for the first fifteen years?
And to address that question, as, as council is aware, the current ordinance does provide for both unified ownership. That means one hundred percent of the owners submitting the application for both the original application and for the amendment. Recent case law has instructed us that in certain circumstances, this is not a correct thing to do, because in the event that there is not unified ownership, that does, in effect, cause council to delegate their authority to a private owner. That was established in the Lawfred Terra case in two thousand and ten. And in certain, certain circumstances, if there are multiple owners and one owner will not agree to the application, it will prevent the application from coming to council. So these amendments do allow for an opportunity, if there is disagreement or not one hundred percent of the owners submitting the application, a process to still have that presented to council.
So if a person, so initially, somebody come in with a large tract and wanted PD. And what you're saying is they sell off the tracks individually, then those individuals then do not need the permission of the original holder of the PD?
There's a mechanism to get that before council. Certainly, it would be probably preferable for all entities within that PD to present a unified amendment to council. But in the event that they do not, the revisions in this ordinance provide that an application still, can still be submitted. The other property owners are notified of that. They're given the opportunity to protest that. If they do not protest, they are deemed to have waived any objections to it. However, if they do protest, that, it will still before, come before the P N Z and before council. So the council does not inappropriately delegate that legislative authority to the holdout property owner.
So they can protest under the two thou-, two-hundred-square-foot rule, square, I mean, square-foot rule?
This is, this is a different mechanism. This is a special notification to the actual property owners within the PD. So they will have detailed information about what the application for the amendment does entail.
If, if I may cite an example to bring real life to your question. Plantation Trails has a commercial reserve on ten ninety-two, but it has how many homes within the PD? If somebody wants to develop the commercial reserve in a way that's even slightly different than the PD provides, right now, they have to get every homeowner in Plantation Trails to agree to the change. The change, and I failed to include it in, in the cover memo, the applicant on an amended plan development request may only request a change as to that applicant's property, not anybody else within the PD. PD eight in Sienna has been divided into multiple ownerships also, and it, it may pose a problem. It's a concept that we think will ease in redevelopment, and that's why we brought it forward.
So and then the other side to that is, it really isn't an issue if they're not asking for, unless they're asking for something different than the PD, or something different in the PD?
If, if there's a change in the, if there's a difference in signage.
Okay.
As we have used that, variances for signage through the PD process. And to have that change would require all people, right now, would require everybody to join in and agree to it.
Any other comments? Not with vote. There was a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt, second by Councilman Wynn. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item B, no public hearings. Item A, there are no appointments. Item nine, authorizations. Item nine A is to consider authorizing acceptance of land from Sienna Plantation Municipal Utility District Number One for the surface water treatment plant.
Mayor, this item, staff wishes for this item to be pulled as there's still continuing negotiations on this item.
Okay. All right. Then nine B is consider approving the request to record the ten-twenty-year tax write-off summary.
Move that, Doc.
You tell us getting late, Wes, huh? Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt made the motion. Was it Councilman Smith that made the second?
Smith made the motion, that's second.
All right. Either way, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item ten, there are no ordinances. Item eleven, a resolution. Eleven A.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting consent to First Colony Municipal District Number Nine to annex certain land situated within the corporate limits of the city of Missouri City, Texas.
Clear motion?
Move through. Second.
What's the value of that?
Who seconded?
I did.
Fine. What, what's your question, Don?
Is that, what's the value of that, the land that we're going to allow to annex?
The appraised value?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of the appraised value.
Is it significant?
Well, it, it has no, it has no value to the city, other than if it goes into the district, now the district can service it. If somebody has the land that's trying to develop it, and it is within incentive, ultimately, I guess we could, you know, get some tax money from it, once it develops. Apparently, it can't develop because it has no service, because it's not in a municipal utility district. Yeah.
To actually correct that, this one is in, is a unique circumstance. It is actually located in a municipal utility district. Another municipal utility district is willing to expend the cost. This one, this is very different. You've seen this circumstance like this before. The two utility districts have agreed to, for the, this new utility district to collect the money and to provide those services, being in a local agreement. This is unusually typical. Both utility districts have agreed to-
Long as, long as the city of Missouri City can benefit in any-
Do you have any provision put in there that allows for?
Yeah, make it a difference.
They won't get double taxation, is that what you're saying?
I don't think so. It would be staff's recommendation to adopt this resolution for the provision of utilities to this tract.
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item twelve, or city council announcements. Any announcements? I'd like to thank those of you who responded to my mother-in-law's unexpected death. I appreciate the compliments and, at least the comments and such, and being with our family for the last two weeks, so thank you for that.
I understand.
Let's see. I did, I will announce at the meeting in April for the Fort Ben Mayor and Council, Ben Stafford, and it will be the Fort Ben Emergency Service. Anything, let's just keep reminding people, we, we have our day in Austin.
May second.
May second. And at some point in time, I assume, we're going to have something where people can go online and sign up to attend, so we know how many buses?
Well, yeah, we got a forty-seven passenger bus, I believe it is.
Eight forty-seven.
Yes. If there's more people want, I guess, both, yeah, first come, first served on this one. And we'll probably later this week actually start getting some stuff out to those who we want to make sure are, kind of, some of our invited guests, to get them on board.
And Stacy and I are working with the Skeeters still for May third, as Missouri City Night with the Skeeters, and we'll be getting details out about that, because again, we're going to, we're going to want a big crowd there. And what we're working out with them is some of our commercial partners doing some sponsor things like caps and, you know, different deals. I know Benny Keith has a suite. I think Republic has offered a suite that night, you know, for our use. But, you know, we're going to be selling tickets to that, and I think, didn't he say like twelve bucks or something like, it's going to be the price of the ticket, Stacy? And that, what, some, and it's a reduced price, and they're going to contribute back to our police program, I dare to follow the rules. That's where the proceeds of that charity will go. So we'll get all of our twelve hundred kids or so that are involved in our program out selling mom and daddy a ticket to come see them.
We, we worked out with them for five dollars for the tickets, so we're going to work with our commercial sponsors to underwrite those tickets so that we can give them for free to a lot of students.
What a deal, huh? But we want to fill that stadium that night with Missouri City people.
And Republic-
Seventy-five hundred of them.
Is giving us their suite. We have twenty tickets in Republic Suite.
Yes.
And we're working with some local organizations to present that night. And I'm actually going to Constellation Field tomorrow because Kyle is going to present at-
May third. It's Missouri City Night at the Skeeters game, at the Constellation Field. It's the day after we go to Austin and buy it. All right, we'll reconvene in-